Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes from July 7, 2025, committee meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Item number four, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number five, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the current and previous months and authorized partial payment for such purchase order.
Okay, we have partial payment to the state auditor's office for $34,137.8. Emergency management, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, invoice dated old year and OPO was opened, it's for $16.20. Car wash. Sheriff's Office, RCB Bank, lease renewal not approved by B-O-C-C, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, $2,112.96, this is on the new Bearcat. E-911. Emergency notification system to hyper reach, PO should have been opened in July, on July 1st, it wasn't open until July 2nd, for $7,000. Emergency management. Lawton Communications, Chickasha Annual Tower Lease, $1,300. Proper purchasing procedures were not followed, should have been open July 1st, it was July 3rd. Emergency management, Stanley Systems, dated 7/7/2025, estimated seven, copier, just discovered this one's not open for July 1st, yearly maintenance, $14,167.8. Highway District 1, Department of Environmental Quality. Quality, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, invoice dated before PO, should have been open July 1st, it was July 7th, $251.32. Title Senior Citizens. Estimated January 2025 payroll. I guess it was not turned in till now, it's $1,526.29.
From January?
Yup. Title Senior Citizens. 4/7/2025. So they opened the February payroll in April. For $10,350.22. Title Senior Citizens. 4/7/2025, invoice dated before PO, March 2025 payroll, $5,253.83. Highway Budget, Comdat Inc., Incorporated, Estimative Fuel Safety Director. $248.67. OSU Extension, Training Wells Group LLC, invoice dated before PO, proper procedures not followed, $5,124.97. I think they've talked to Title Senior Citizens quite a bit to try to get this figured out.
I think this week or maybe next week, there's going to be the county senior citizen meeting here. And that usually does.
Do you want Sydney to come down and visit with them again?
It wouldn't hurt if.
Make a motion to approve the.
Yes.
Safety.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department and safety director.
Bill's out today, so.
Cam?
I don't have a whole lot, we do have our board meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I sent the financials out Friday evening, I've drawn up a tender, waitin' on Brandon to approve it, so hopefully by the time I go home, we can have that out and posted. That's all I know.
Bobby?
I connect the safety orientation for temporary personnel in the construction department Monday, I will be at the LIPC meeting. This time, I guess they'll put it up there at the golf course, so we'll meet the meeting up there. And item three is just some areas where I did some work in tree trimming and bridges and stuff like that.
Thank you, because we're really behind on that.
Yeah, do you do that at your own volition, or do you get, or you need notified at these particular areas?
No, I do it at my own volition, when I'm out there, there'll be days where I'll go out and just drive some roads and come across some areas where I've already seen some trees kind of over growing on this ridge, and I'll get out there and set up those small work zones and just clear it out.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I know they do too.
You're welcome.
For what you do.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number seven, discussion and possible action on reports and work orders from the construction superintendent.
Most of what I have is an agenda item further down the list, but the rain Saturday opened the sinkhole behind the DA's office again, city's on it, and then there was an area behind the health department that they've been notified somebody would be able to fix it, we've got it coming off, so nobody will get in it, but most of my stuff's an agenda item later down the list.
Okay. Item number eight, public comments, no one signed up. Item number nine, new business in accordance with open meeting act, title 25, according to statutes, 311, A9, new business is defined as any matter not known about, or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda.
Yeah, I kind of got something, it's kind of popped up this morning, it's not necessarily a voteable item, but it's something we need to discuss on the VOTEC parking lot. John talked to Judd this morning, he needs 15 trucks?
Yeah, 12 to 15 trucks, thought.
So, we can throw eight at it, I don't know.
I can get six or seven from him.
I just know that VOTEC's very concerned about us getting that done before school starts.
Yeah. We can start from here, too.
They probably should have hired a contractor instead of using us for a contractor, but that's. I mean, if you're.
Yeah, I think they said school starts at 12:00 in the evening.
I don't think anybody accounted for the, I mean, the.
Nobody.
Water is as far behind as.
Right, as everybody else.
As everybody else is.
When do we need to start this?
We can plan on Wednesday and Thursday, just to back up a truck, send it out.
Other than that, that's all I got. I got some real good, the sheriff's office, I want to thank you all for hiring the extra person over at the, to help with the warehouse project, it has been a long, a long ways since the official help has been hired, Mike and the team, they're kicking it out, it's all real good, invite you all over, if you want to come see the progress that we've done and see what the taxpayers are paying for, from where it's come from to where it's going to.
Thank you, Cory. Item number 10, discussion and possible approval of section line staking survey located in District 2, Grady County, Oklahoma.
This is the survey that the gentleman did for our road, did you look it over? If we're good with that?
Of course I am, I mean, I haven't seen nothing, of course it's a big part of it. But it has to be approved for last week's resolution.
Make a motion to approve this taking.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Do I, do I get with John about?
Is he still blocked from the court?
He's in the back.
Okay, but is he still blocked from the court, because wasn't there something that we were waiting for?
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
I don't think it's been reset, has it?
I don't, I haven't heard anything that it has, that's, I didn't know how to.
It appears you've done what you needed to do here, but again, as I had said to you, Cory, I'll go back with your lawyer and figure out what you need to do here.
Okay, and then when we move forward, get with John about?
Yeah, you can talk to John.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item number 11, discussion and possible action on cleaning services for OSU USDA building.
So they thought they were going to try to clean it themselves, but it's more than they thought, this is a quote from the gentleman that has been there, we never had anything written, I don't think, from him, so we received, I think either $3,520 a month or $3,250 a month from the USDA, so that's what we used to pay that, but I have not heard from Mr. Jackson as to whether this guy has to go back through the federal background check, because that's his big thing, so. We may need to table this till next week, till we hear from Mr. Jackson, the farm service USDA office.
Have they always had commercial cleaning people?
Yes, they've always had, that means clean for like 20 years. Because they want it done before or after hours.
I'm filing a table on it, I said I'm filing a table on it till we have more information on it.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Second. Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Bye.
Item 12, discussion and possible approval of a quote from Dynamic Fabrication for $1,558 for a locking cage to secure the generator at the health department and determine what account to pay it at.
So a couple weeks ago, a sunup was changing gas meters out down that alley, and it was brought to my attention that people have been taking parts overnight and on the weekends taking pieces off of the generator, so it's just to keep anybody from being able to get into it, and I assume since that's a county building, it would be on us to protect it, or we'll be replacing the generator at some point, and it's, wouldn't be cheap for that, so. It's just going to be a cage that we anchor to that concrete pad, it'll have access for their panels, but it'd be locked up to where, unless you have a key, you're not getting in it.
I'm filing paying.
Yeah.
Paying for it, Jim, what's the, the, what's the other one, capital improvement? I have capital improvement. I'll make a motion to take word out of capital improvement.
I'll say.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
I will have to see who is the requisition on that, because I don't have my.
So I think it's me, but I can't.
I think that's other place.
So you can just sign it here?
I'll just have to.
I'll sign it if somebody else can sign it, if it's different.
Okay. Okay, item number 13, discussion and possible approval to rescind the concrete portion of bid 24/25007 due to specification error, we need to pay my coffee classroom for any work that has already been completed.
So the parking lot, from the sheriff's office, when we sent the bids back out, the numbers on the square footage were not right, and it wasn't caught until he got over there, started pulling grade, and was going to stake it off that we were short about 2,200 square foot on the parking lot, which made it over the percentage of doing a change order, so in order to fix it, we're going to have to rebid the concrete portion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind it.
Second. Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
And on that, I want to apologize, I believe I'm the culprit on the, so I will take blame for that.
Did it have my fingers and toes? Of all people.
I know.
Item 14, discussion and possible action on bid request for rebidding of concrete for the fence parking lot for Grady County, originally on bid 24/25007.
No, that was, we need to go out for bids, rescinded it, not only you go out for bids.
Gary?
I'll make a motion to go out for bids on, on concrete for that.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach? Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item 15, discussion and possible action on bid request for an addition on the Grady County District 3 building, 45 by 20 by 16.
Just me and Doug talked about this last week, there's going to be a break room, locker room, and a kitchen slash break room on the west side of the building.
West side of the building.
All the specs, specs are drawn, somewhere, clerk's office has a copy, if you want to look at it.
Is that what they though?
Probably, should take that spec at the top of it.
No, that's the drawings.
I don't know.
Oh, that's quarter, I see. Take much chip, Ruth.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Okay, item 16, discussion and possible approval of a table for automatic renewal of recent number. Okay, 40051-19-01 between USDA and Grady County. I haven't read it completely.
Okay.
And I'm not so sure that the agreement actually has an automatic renewal.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Okay, item number 17, discussion and possible approval for renewal of agreement between Grady County Clerk and Department of Policing for fiscal year 25/26.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Okay, item 18, discussion and possible approval of the following, following agreements for District 3 for fiscal year 25/26. CAT Financial Services Corporation lease serial number EB301150. CAT Financial Services Corporation lease serial number EB301153. CAT Financial Services Corporation lease serial number EB301154. CAT Financial Services Corporation lease serial number EB301122. And CAT Financial Services Corporation lease serial number L9R00176. Right under that is a express employment agreement, staffing agreement, I think that should have been an item of its own, so we can go ahead and approve the CAT Financial Service leases and discuss the express employment agreement, settlement. Is that, is that okay to do that, like that?
You can approve some and not approve others, and you know, shopping malls like this, you know.
So we need to bring the express employment agreement to its own agenda item, then the next.
I don't see, I don't see why you would need to do that, I don't see why you'd need to do that, you could approve the five cats.
Okay.
And not approve the express, I mean.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But you could probably approve, if you wanted to approve the express, you could probably approve just all of them at the same time, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, is the, is there someone with express employment here?
There's not.
Okay, we, you did.
Yes, Charles has already looked at it.
Okay, so we're good, just go ahead, okay, I'll make motion to approve the leases and the agreement.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
But I still did it, but I'll call this bit right here aside. And that's all it needs to be.
I'll go ahead and sign, you want to sign at the other, I think that's the question, I think you're supposed to sign at the next time.
Do we need two signatures to replace for another one?
I think.
Just one. Item number 19, discussion and possible approval of rescinding approval of lease agreement between Grady County District 3 and CAT Financial Service Corporation, previously approved on 7/7/25, lease expired July 24, A25-116, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say again.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Item 20. Item 20, discussion and possible approval of interlocal agreement between Grady County District 3 and any called public schools, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Item 21, discussion and possible approval of amended resolution 25-243, disposal of equipment for inventory number 3480068, correct inventory number, which should be 3480062 for District 3, all this is, is correction, I'll make a motion to approve, I'll say that.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach? Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item 22, discussion and possible approval to accept a bid from Demopinion for the following properties, parcel ID number C001-00-288-002-0-000-00.
That's that house on Sixth Street that they did a sale and the lady came in and put a bid on it, so it has not been torn down, she's been on it, so I make a motion to accept.
Second, okay. Zach?
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item 23, discussion and possible approval of maintenance agreement between Grady County District 1 and Alcom Security Systems for fiscal year 25/26, I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Item 24, discussion and possible approval of intergovernmental agreement between Grady County District 1 and Custer County District 3 for the purchase of a 1995 Ford speed loader in the amount of $30,000.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Okay. Item twenty-five, discussion and possible approval of the following lease agreements between Grady County Sheriff and RCB Bank for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. RCB Bank lease number one zero three four six nine six three. RCB Bank lease one oh four nine nine three five. RCB Bank lease zero, correction, one zero four zero one seven seven six. RCB Bank lease number one zero three nine seven six five one. RCB Bank lease one zero three nine seven five nine four. RCB Bank lease number one zero three nine four zero one three. RCB Bank lease one zero three six three seven seven eight. RCB Bank lease one zero three five eight two nine nine. RCB Bank lease number one zero three five five two eight seven. I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, discussion and possible. Item twenty-six, discussion and possible approval of contract labor employment agreement between Sherry Longnecker and Grady County Treasurer for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
I saw it, suggested changes, I don't know if those changes were made, I haven't. Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-seven.
Karen.
Yeah. Uh, acknowledgement of adding affordable cremation services as a vendor for Grady County.
They called my office and asked if they could be put on the list, I really thought they were already there, but.
Kind of thought they went to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went from the knowledge.
Did, did you ask him if she knew?
I know, I mean, one of the girls, one of my girls in the office, I just told her to call Kimberly.
I thought we used them before.
I thought we had two, I think the deal was is they realized they hadn't been used in a while or something, and they wondered if they were still on the list.
We have a hamburger, we have a hamburger, I mean.
Yeah. So.
I don't know that we've used affordable, we think, but that's a little bit used.
Oh, okay. They just wanted to be put on the vendor.
If we ever use, uh, affordable cremation services.
No.
Are, are you familiar with them? You're not familiar with them?
I think they're out of Oklahoma City, they just asked me to come and get them.
I, I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make motion to approve. Okay, this is knowledge, okay. All right, twenty-eight, discussion and possible action to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, remotion, disband, or resignation of any individual. Sa- any individual salary public officer or employee, specifically Kimberly Thomas Smith, Title twenty-five, up on Statute three oh seven B one. Twenty-nine, uh, be back in regular session, discussion, possible action to enter back to regular session.
I'll make a motion to enter back into regular session.
Second. Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item number thirty, uh, discussion and possible action to vote and take any necessary action on executive session.
I will make a motion to move Ken to emergency management effective August eighteenth. Same pay, just a few additional duties.
I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay. Item thirty-one, discussion and possible action of courthouse renovation.
Thank you.
So, those are not one hundred percent accurate, there's been some changes made, but I don't have new ones yet, but it's just a few changes here and there. The third floor is kind of our, where we're stuck.
So, Judge Low and Judge Young would like to both be in the basement, have their courtrooms. When they, we renovate, they would like to be in the basement together, Micah, that Judge Low and Judge Young.
Okay.
Uh, Micah and, uh, Judge Kirkland kind of got theirs figured out the other day. Um, we were trying to think about possibly a fourth judge, not knowing, and this is the decision we need, not knowing what we want to do with the third floor, um. If we want to go on and set up for a fourth courtroom, that may or may not get used, but we're looking, you know, it's the next zero to hundred years or whatever, um. Micah said she helped us kind of set that out, because she kind of knows about jury rooms and, you know, what they need, basically. But, um, we could put a break room up there, the guys, you know, I think that our security officers, you know, they, they bring their lunches and stuff, and a lot of times they eat in a break room. We just need help on figuring out what we want to do with the third floor. We originally thought the two judges would go to third floor, but they worked the basement.
There was just not enough room up in the third floor for two courtrooms and jury rooms, and there was, had staff to be up there, so.
So, we're just needing some input on what you all think for the third floor, so we can get it to the architect.
Do we build another courtroom on an if, if we get one, and if we do, is it ten years, is it twenty years?
Yeah, I mean, we have no idea when we possibly could get.
So, we have a courtroom that sits up there unused when we're, I mean, spaces, the creming ground here, so.
Didn't know if you go on and do it, and then just line it with shelves for storage, and then make a, um, break room. The custodians need an area, um.
Doc said he.
Said he just needs an idea of what we need done on the third floor, so that he can go on and get it drawn out, and so.
This was what we, these right here have all changed since last, what was that, Friday, Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
So, this isn't the newest step?
No, that's the newest what we had, they've not made the revisions on what we talked about last week. So, where it shows the two courtrooms on the third floor, they would like to move all that to the basement.
The basement's bigger than the third floor, because.
Because you lose all that space with the big courtroom you had there.
Judge Kirkland's, uh, ceiling goes out and takes, takes some of that third floor, so. They just, they're, they're hashing out the basement, first floor, second floor, but it's the third floor, we need, we need help on.
I, I mean, I, my personal opinion is, yeah, we go ahead and do the fourth courtroom, because that was kind of, I mean, that was kind of one of the things that we revved into it. If we have, if we have a space for a room, we can get a judge going faster, might be. And that was one of the things that, I mean, that was the core of the idea when we were first started talking about it, is a fourth quarter.
Be cheaper now, ten years from now.
Correct.
Right, so you think we're going to do a fourth courtroom, get a layout that's needed, uh, Micah's help with that, and then maybe make a, a break room for the, I mean, they go down to the basement now, it's just a matter of going upstairs to eat their lunch or whatever.
And they use that bathroom upstairs on the third floor too, that's the restroom that the deputy uses.
Okay, and go on and put the restrooms in that we need, um.
On that can make a suggestion as well, they have their lockers in Judge's, Judge Young's bathroom right now.
So, we could, we could make a locker room for the security guards, I mean.
And it doesn't have to be big.
Yeah.
On a courtroom, you need a courtroom, judge's office, bailiff's office.
And a court reporter.
A court reporter, and a jury deliberation.
Right, yeah, yeah. There has to be a restroom off of the jury room, because they can't use the public restroom, it's right up there, yeah.
All that, that's what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, um. Even if you didn't have an assigned special or another DJ, we're not going to have another DJ, but we're independent, it's not a special, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Uh, even in the absence of having one on a full-time basis, it is not inconceivable to need, to have another courtroom for this reason, in, uh, jury weeks, and I know we don't do prelims during jury weeks, but we could.
Yeah.
Get David Stevens come over from, uh, Cato, and he could do a, uh, prelim while Gina's doing a jury trial, Joey, everybody's doing a jury trial. We could, we could do more business, even with, if we had a courtroom, even if we didn't have an assigned full-time judge.
It would also help with like arraignments too, because if we have jury stuff going, then we have to kind of just like squeeze in, the judges will have to cut their lunch short, and.
So.
So, size-wise, if it was to be like what Judge Low has now, would that be?
I would imagine we could do like even what Judge Young has.
We could, we could.
Yeah.
Don't lay it out like.
No, but I'm saying like smaller, it doesn't have to be.
But, but yeah, a small courtroom.
Yeah.
This, well, this is too small right here, but.
Kind of like Judge Low, I mean, it wouldn't need as much space, like.
In the well, there wouldn't be as, behind the bar.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, a courtroom, if you're doing it.
Well, and, and like, I'm glad you brought that up, Corey, because we could, we could put a locker room area for the deputies, um, area for the custodians to have.
Yeah.
Uh, and a break room, and.
And you've used the floor.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
But you just said that, that's, you're done.
Like on our floor, we were gonna do like a break room, but it's mainly for like the jury, so if the jury's out, like, we can't use that, so we would have to use a different break room, whatever.
The only thing we talked about in the break room, that we basically had a refrigerator, microwave, ice maker, no stove, because it costs too much money to get those things.
Yeah.
And I don't know that anybody uses the stove.
You get a air fryer, we get an air fryer.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know that anybody actually uses the stove.
Who's cooking that?
Yeah, well, Lois used to, when she was here, Lois did a lot of cooking upstairs, but, uh.
She's not.
Yeah, so, we just thought we might not put a stove in.
That's good, but, yeah, I was, I'd say for a courtroom now.
Okay, so we need to get with Micah and Corey and.
Just a courtroom.
Yeah, I think a courtroom.
We just needed some more in, but I'm willing to make, I mean, I don't want to make any decisions, I want all y'all to know what's going on.
That was one of the things when we first started, was that I wanted to, for sure, I wanted a fourth courtroom, for sure.
But, that, that Judge Low and Judge Young feel like they would be better served if they were down here together, um, to, so they could rip that out, so.
That phase for the existing DA building is pretty well set, it's, if you get time to look at it when you go back to your offices, that is about ready. Should be the last phase.
And I do want to thank Micah and the judges, the DA's office, Mike, the architect, everybody. With these two commissioners for wanting to go forward with this, it's, I think it's gonna be beautiful, and it's, they've got to get all this ready, so they can crunch numbers and tell us how much.
Yeah. We're gonna get all that stuff out of, around the building, so I can move in.
Chalk chalk, Mike.
Well, now we have to go out for bid, so I gotta try to give that, but I've had more on my plate right now than I can fit stuff.
Really?
I mean, you wanna, you got a building, we can just go put it in, because I'm okay with that.
No, I'm, I'm sitting here with my boxes ready.
I have had some people tell me there's places in town that, um, breakout minister, he's on Twenty-Ninth in Georgia, said he may have some room, um. Enduro Bond, somebody told me Enduro Bond has some room, so, I mean, I think some people coming forward that we may, you know, when it gets to it, but, um. Wanted some input. And so, make a motion to approve, um, fourth courtroom, break room, area for the custodians and deputies locker area, and, you know, and of course, there will be restrooms.
I'll second it.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-two, discussion and possible action and budget items for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Make motion to approve.
That's not bad, this isn't a big one. That's, that's not bad, this is a circular, where I don't know what the budget items are.
Have we had anything?
I don't remember seeing anything in the pack, I didn't either.
Table, do you?
Table?
Stable. Make a motion to table.
Second. Uh, Gary?
Zach? Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item thirty-three, discussion and possible approval of, uh, utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway ten-foot permits, make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Thirty, um, thirty-fourth, discussion and possible approval of county alternate reports. Make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-five. Discussion and possible approval of visits with a means for quizz for appropriations and transfer of appropriations. I'll make a. Motion.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.